For meeting for April the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M. I'd like to recognize that we're on to treaty five land, traditional land of neutral way set creation and homeland naked and that we are all treaty people. Thank you. I have an approval of the agenda. I'll sit this Patrick. Home for remember, all in favor. Here it is. Next, we're going to community comments and feedbacks.
We're on Manitowoc Twenty Eighth Street. I'm wondering if the bids came in on the paving are on budget.
The new, the new.
The baby project for this.
For twenty twenty-three?
This season, yes.
Yep. So I believe we just had a special meet, regular meeting of council at six P M where those were reviewed. Um, the paving came in, uh, what the engineer's estimate, just slightly over what the engineer's estimate was. Um, and council has just approved awarding the tenant.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And then there's an agenda package where you can see all the attachments.
Any other comments, questions, community feedback? Certain time, comments of community feedback. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, next we have a presentation from M K O and uh, read the monument sign looking up and I have, I see Heidi Stents on my screen, uh, David Thomas on my screen. Is there anyone else joining you folks? Okay. We will turn it over to you. You are on, uh, okay, you're unmuted now, Heidi.
I'm good now. You guys can hear me?
Yeah.
Good, uh, good evening rather, everybody. Um, uh, thank you for allowing myself and Dave an opportunity to um, to come and uh, have a little um, little bit of an update. So um, we provided a briefing note and I'm just gonna quickly go through it. Um, so currently there's no monument in northern Manitoba that honors the lives and legacies of the missing and murdered indigenous women and girls and to us, LGBTQ individuals in northern Manitoba. So um, we worked, we've been working on this project um, to, to essentially build a a monument in the north here in, in Canada, in, in Thompson and the, the design that we have has, has been chosen by families and community members and we're, we're hoping to have the, the monument completed by August of this year and the, I the site where we have it is, is up on the hill um, by the Miles Heart Bridge across from the float plane. So I know all the um, the plans and whatnot were, were submitted with um, kind of the details as exactly where. So we compiled the list of some of the things that um are needed from um, what we're asking for in kind from the city of Thompson. So I'll just go through. So we needed um, a land transfer for the monument site and the parking lot. So that's number one. Number two is the parking lot. The cost of the parking lot is approximately seventy-seven thousand dollars. And number three is maintaining the monthly electrical bill. So we, we haven't heard back from Hydro on what the estimate would be monthly for, for the bill. Um, once the monument is installed and we haven't heard back yet. Uh, number four would be test holes for the foundation. And then again, we had an engineer estimate the cost that approximately seven thousand dollars. And then the fifth one is the foundation design. So that would entail two twenty-five foot piles and a pile cap slash pad. And that um, cost is at approximately twenty-five thousand dollars and that quote was provided by um, John Reed Wolf from engineering. So our request is um, in order to have the monument completed, um, we're asking the city of Thompson if they can provide in-kind support for points one, three, four, and five. Um, for part, for number two, um, we, we would provide the funds to the city of Thompson, the seventy-seven thousand dollars for the parking lot. And um, we would provide it to the city of Thompson if you guys could take the lead on um, getting the parking lot developed and, and constructed, if you will. Um, and, and again, the reason for that is because you guys, you guys have connections to the, the con, the necessary contractors in, in order to provide the work. So that's, that's what I have. Um, Dave, did I miss anything, Dave, that we needed to kind of highlight there?
No, that sounds good. That's, that's, that's good. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to council. If there's any comments or questions. First administration, do you have any comments, questions on it at this point? Okay. Any clarifying questions from council that they might answer? Deputy Mayor Valentino?
Thanks, Ms. Uh, thanks for your updated information to the original presentation. I mean, I think this is a great initiative. I do have some questions though, because you identify that there's potential partnerships with Valet Manitoba Hydro and the province of Manitoba. So I know for myself, I would feel more, far more comfortable in say agreeing to the city of Thompson doing all this, but I'd like to know what the other partnerships are and where they can also help contribute also, because I think it's very difficult um, on our end as counselors to uh, commit to unknown when we use municipal dollars and taxpaying dollars to say that we will support electricity bills, but we don't know a dollar amount because we have to justify every dollar amount that we do commit to spending. So I'm looking to see if there's still an opportunity to bring Valet Hydro and the province of Manitoba onboard also to help with some of these um, the needed one to fives.
Um, I think that's something we could explore. I know with the um, with respect to the, the province and um, with Valet and um, Manitoba Hydro, I believe Hydro, um, they would be installing the electrical, if I'm correct. Am I correct on that, Dave? I think so. Um, doing the installation so that, that's something that they were um, that would be provided by them. Um, Valet, um, that's still something that we're working on as a potential partnership with them to see what um, they would be able to assist us with um, when it comes time to do the unveiling. And again, with the province of Manitoba, um, we, you know, we're, that's something that we're still working on as well. So again, um, I, and I understand the you know, the, with the dollar, the dollar mark and not really knowing, you know, especially with the estimate. Again, that's something that we weren't able to, to get and, and have ready for the, the meeting this evening.
Yeah. I'm just gonna follow up. Thanks, Mr. Smoke. So um, in terms of looking, why am I thinking that there's some grant opportunities for initiatives like this federally or conventionally? And I'm kind of looking at staff on, I'm thinking that there is, or has this been explored also um, to look at something like this as a monument in a municipality? I'm wondering if there's federal dollars or provincial dollars that we can look at through any grants? Is that the next word?
Um, so the, the project itself is um, being, it is funded by wage, which is through the province. So like the construction of the monument, um, those, those dollars have been given um, from, from the province through, through wage. So that's been, and we, we haven't um, there's no other avail, I guess, at this time right now, there's no other available monies through them that we can access to, to put towards the monument.
Anthony? Yeah, I'm in the administration. We'd have to look and see if there are any other grants that we're aware of. I'm not aware of any that are currently out. I've seen some in the past um, for monuments, um, with different recognition, but I'm not aware of any that are open at this time. We'll have to have a look.
Anyone else?
Councilor Oberdorfer? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you for your presentation today. Um, the monument looks really beautiful and really excited to see this eventually uh, come to fruition in our community. Um, my comments are similar to Deputy Mayor Valentino's, just regarding um, other partnerships that have been explored um, and other grants. I, I agree with uh, that the cost is quite significant. So I I mean, I think that would have to be more of like a budget discussion uh, amongst council, but um, yeah, I would, I would be interested to see if there is opportunities to explore other partnerships as well, not just the city of Thompson. Um, but the one question I did have was about the utilities and the land transfer. So my understanding is that the land is owned by the city right now. And so are you, you're asking for the land to be transferred to um, M K O for the monument site, but then you're asking for the utilities, the ongoing cost of utilities, is that correct? Is that what you're asking for?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And so is there a reason that you would want the land to be transferred if you were asking for the utility costs, I guess, to be provided in, or in kind on, as an ongoing contribution?
Um, I guess more or less to, to have, like to be able to do the construction on the land and to have the monument placed there. That's, I guess that's what we meet, would mean in, in terms of the land, like the land transfer?
Such a wonderful question, um, which is, I guess, more to administration. Um, if a council was to consider uh, this one request regarding the utilities, um, if this project was to go forward, um, would the land have to be transferred or would it? Could it remain in the city's name, I guess, like with this, what would make the most sense?
Both options are viable. So just like we have other parks around that are monuments around the community, um, we also have parks where other organizations pay for parts of that. Then the city either can hand that land over or own and maintain that land. And we could sign agreements however council wanted to proceed.
Thank you for that clarification.
Can you relax? I, uh, excuse me, I just have a couple uh, questions or uh, concerns. So when I was out last fall, when we sort of talked about this land and they were actually working on Manitoba Hydro Transformers, because there is some main transformers on that area. Uh, they had some concern with the placement of the monument and how their access to the transformers would be, or uh, if the transformers have to be a certain distance from different things. So have you approached Manitoba Hydro and got all that checked out with them?
Dave, were you able to speak to that when you met with Hydro?
Yeah, um, I was out there and I met with Manitoba Hydro and we looked at the clearances um, on the site as far as transformers and, and connections, utility box for the metering of the um, electrical connections. And we located um, with, with uh, Manitoba Hydro, we located a, a actual location for the monument, which was with, with within the guidelines that they um, um, I guess being, being not below the power lines and being off to the side. So we, we worked with Manitoba Hydro to make the location establish that. It's in the drawings that uh, I believe you have.
Okay. And then I guess my next thing was uh, the snowmobile trail and the traffic that goes through that area. Uh, have you approached the snowmobile club? And I've also, you know, any trail was up in that area. So you would have to work with our folks to, to make that work also.
We, unfortunately, we were unable to connect with the snowmobile club um, um, and have and speak to a representative um, from there. Um, we tried to a few times to, to touch base with them. So um, but again, you know, we're, we're still waiting to, to hear from them and, and have some conversations with them about um, the monument and, and their trail, because we know it's their trail is right in the area of where, um, where the monument is. It's pretty close. So that's something that we're aware of.
Okay. Yeah, we, we, when I was on the site uh, last month, uh, um, we kind of looked at some alternate kind of locations of where the trail could go if it had to be moved. I just, it just, it just makes a sharper uh, turn uh, to the, as it's heading towards the road, it just turns, there's a, there's a bit of a clearing that it could be cleared out. Uh, it's a possibility. So there, there are some solutions.
Thank you very much. Anything further, counsel? Okay. Well, thank you very much. If we have any more questions. Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't see your console on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I won't worry about this uh, administration part, like uh, if we take over this, like, you know, this contract or this job. Do we have enough manpower right now? I know we try to stay above the water with the ongoing project that we are facing right now. Unless I'm wrong, Ted, please correct me, administration. So uh, we able to to, to handle this on top of what we already have on, on the plane?
I think that's a discussion we will have.
This is what I wanted to see. Yeah.
Yeah, we can prepare something what the implications would be. I'm not prepared tonight to answer that, but we could work on bringing something back to council, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Ellenmark?
Yeah. Love the project and the monument. Beautiful. So one of my questions too is the, since we're transferring the land and we monitor we're dealing with the election costs. Who's dealing with the offers or the maintenance of the site? If it's transferred, presumably it would be M K O. The city was maintaining the land or keep the land. But then be us the painting the water. If there's gonna be cleanup and uh, I guess rejuvenation of this monument. Everything paint, pills, yes, weather, whatever. Wondering about the long term. Um, who's planning on doing that?
So I, um, from what it sounds like, I believe that would be something that we would take care of is making sure that um, you know, if there was any damages to the monument or if it needed um, you know, things needed fixing, that's something that we would um, ensure that happens. So you know, the upkeep of it, um, that's something that we, we did talk about. And I know um, when talking with Dave and the monument, it's, it's, it's fairly large. And in the event that there was something that was, that happens to it, um, it's being built in such a way that it can come off in, in different pieces so that they can be replaced and, and fixed quite easily. So um, you know, the, the maintenance and just the care of, of the area is something that we would, we would take, we would take care of.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you feel the parking lot area is uh, adequate uh, for this monument? Like, if, you know, if we end up wanting to have some gatherings or, you know, um, bigger group things out there, have you taken that into consideration?
Um, I think it would be a pretty good space. Um, just, you know, I'm just picturing up there right now and just thinking about where the parking lot would be. I, I think that um, there would be enough space to, to hold a nice size gathering. Um, you know, we've, we've done um, other gatherings previously um, right near the bridge, you know, and um, there hasn't been too many people that it would be unsafe, if you will. Um, it's, it's been okay. So I, I, I think that it's a fair, a fair amount of space.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Oberdorfer? If you know where, um, based on it, sorry, another question that I thought of, but um, they'd mentioned Manitoba Hydro and installation of services. Have they confirmed that they're going to cover that cost or is that going to be an additional cost to the project? Is that still unknown?
Dave, do we have an answer for that one regarding Hydro?
I believe um, all, we're still waiting to hear from Hydro. It's, they're very favorable. It, it's like, I, I believe uh, they haven't said, but they uh, they, we haven't confirmed, but it, I know that they're gonna be financially helping. We don't know to the extent. We're still trying to um, we have meetings, we had a meetings with a electrician on Friday, so there's still uh, coordination with Hydro. That's still happening with the electrician, project electrician and also Hydro. Uh, but it looks favorable, like looks positive. Uh, I wanted to make one quick statement too in regards to um, maintenance on the site. Um, I work for Treaty One Development Corporation and we've just finished um, uh, completed uh, negotiations with the city for Capion Barracks, which is a hundred and, hundred and sixty acres. And we came across a lot of these um, scenarios with cleaning and roads and snow clearing. And uh, from my experience, um, we, the, those, there's a lot of uh, there's ways to partnerships that could um, uh, as long as we have the same aligned interest, those things are pretty easy to overcome. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you definitely for the information. Uh, it is a beautiful monument and uh, looking forward to getting in touch with you and uh, seeing where we go from here.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for having us this evening.
Hey, thank you. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Next, we're gonna go into reports. Uh, the R C and B slash C S O report. Inspector World, are you? Who's going to consider? You want to go first?
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Um, so the C S O is currently, uh, we do, we have uh, two C S Os on the streets as of today. Uh, we are hoping to have at least a third back in July. Um, and the fourth is still unknown. For the month of March, um, the C S O's worth seventeen days in total, the seven hours of shift. Uh, they did this with the uh, the buyer at Shox as well, uh, December twelfth. Um, assisting with the tracking. As a law. We have uh, the agreement between the C S O and the department. It has been renewed. We're just uh, verbally told to notice we need, just beginning to leave at the time. Uh, so then from he told you on the street, had that now been renewed, um, they would ask the very first commercial of the city to ask to work. Uh, we did submit a grant uh, to Montreal person, uh, gaming. Uh, last year we received a hundred thousand dollars, I think, for fifty. Um, we should know when it's engaged. What is on the back of the rest page? And the C S O was also attended our conference for events. I sent the data walking around and immediately. Um, we are noticing that our numbers are going down a little bit. Um, and again, I think it's kind of with the numbers of C S O's that you have on the streets currently. For merch, um, we had one uh, individual that we transferred to the hospital. Um, our numbers still going to uh, the healing center have increased a little bit. We had around fifteen people uh, that they transferred. Our there, um, still continuing to lodge people in their I P V A at the R school. We had thirty-six for the month of March. Um, and again, the people that they do watch at the R C P uh, and not watching them or bring them to an alternate place is because for their safety and safety of uh, the people that they might be around, they could be hurt themselves. So watching, but they're simply the voters at least for them. Uh, they do continue to do handicap parking and a bylaw practices as well. Uh, they did three handicap um, tickets, issued three handicap tickets and one car violation um, in March. And they are still continuing dispose of uh, open liquor. No wash and then a house room. Around the community, so total, total disposal of thousands, a hundred and thirty days in the moment. On the park, just oscillating with the editor.
Any questions? Clarifications in the C S O report?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Valentino, thanks for, thanks for the report. First off, it's great to see directors like that whole table full. Great to have all of you in the room. Um, my question for the C S O's is with the warmer weather, do they have more of, do they, I don't know the answer to this, but do they? Are they like on foot patrol at all? You know, we talked about having more of a presence downtown and stuff. Do they use the foot patrol or do they just go in the car?
No, they still, they do park the car and do walk. However, let me do walk. They can't arrest anybody because they don't have anybody who run their car to them. Um, so they, they do uh, walk a bit. Their, their bikes were just serviced. Um, so they just pick up that last thing. So they are going to be in a lot of fighting. For face. Anyone else? Counselor one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, I have a question about this uh, substance uh, openly. The number is always the highest compared to the rest. My question to administration, I'd like to know, do you guys have any way or any discussion, how can we reduce that discussion, especially this particular island? And it's technique? And it's a way of medicate those kind of problem? Because we thought, I mean, I'm not interested how many bottles of port to the ground. I'm not interested at all. I interested is a solution, any solution that we can find, that we can help.
Anthony?
Yeah, so this is something that I brought forward to our legal counsel to discuss what are the approaches that we can take to any of these intoxicating substances in the way that they're sold or being used in the community. So I've had some initial discussions. The administration's gonna have to do more research on what's being done in other jurisdictions. So it'd be probably Canada, United States. Um, some of the Commonwealth countries that would have similar legal frameworks as us. Um, so that'll be ongoing work to see what council's options are um, through either bylaw or other legal processes to manage some of that. But it's something that nowhere is really solved as far as I'm aware.
So hopefully we can focus a bit more on that direction. So to see what we can come up. I'm not saying we can solve the problem tomorrow, but I'm saying like ongoing discussion. And I'd like to find some solution based on a bunch of people that's sitting around this table that we should come up, we should be able to come up something rather than pouring into the ground, just not get an answer to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ellenmark?
Yeah, oh. No, we have a time gap or anything. You just, are we actively trying to find more C S Os?
Yeah.
Just pull this one. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, Simon. We will now go to Inspector World for her C and P report.
Yes, your word. Thank you and thank you, counsel. Very long. We speak with you tonight and we'll uh, provide you the future work for March. I'll get right into it. For Mark, we did receive a new recruit from Devon. So our recruit now is paired with one of our officers for on-the-road training for six months. And I was like, just a date that the recruiter's doing very good. And uh, I don't expect any, any problems with him getting signed off after that six-month period with us. We do continue to operate with two hard vacancies. Again, that means that the, the, the comments in those positions have transferred and the new positions are may first haven't yet arrived on site. Our new sergeant that's coming in uh, is waiting on a sale in Alberta. Uh, so things on ourselves and bring that started here. And then our new cop, our cop, what's incoming for work or vacancies? Uh, looking in Island Lake and I expect her to arrive in June. So just a couple of months for that G I S vacancy to be filled and then obviously the sergeant vacancies, we never the house gets sold. So so that's a good bonus. Uh, we do still carry only uh, five of nine of our clerical positions. However, I think the council's aware that we have some uh, temporary support coming into the, to assist with our administrative duties and it is hoping uh, quite a bit. So maybe interact crime trends between January first and March thirty first this year, we built in so far four thousand two hundred and forty-three tall script service that is up from last year for the same time period when we had three thousand nine hundred and forty-nine or an increase of about seven percent. The crime trends that we're seeing increasing this year so far as we work through the year are property crimes. So I thought we've seen an increase so far of thirteen point eight percent. Mission is up by twenty-six point five percent and breaking enters are up by twenty-nine, what twenty-one point nine percent? I don't have the answer quite yet or they, it's a why we're seeing an increase in our property crime, but I am reviewing that to find out where to be uh, where the increases are coming from and should be prepared to report that with the ready more information on the ministry report. As well as some uh, action plans or ways that we're gonna address some increases probably kind of proceed. I didn't have the order to report that we're also seeing deep cases in our persons crimes this year. So we're down about seven point four percent in assault, aggravated assault and assault with a weapon. We're also down about fifty percent in sexual assault and sexual interference calls from last year. So significant increases there. We're down about a hundred and thirty percent in drug possession and drug trafficking calls compared to last year, down about twenty-two percent for driving calls. Our prisoner count is up quite a bit from last year. This year we're up about thirty-one point seven percent over last year's. More prisoners going into ourselves this year. Total prisoners to date this year, one thousand and seventy-three. Total prisoners lodged in March was one hundred and eleven. And of those, the C S O was launched, I had thirty-two, so I need to report thirty-six. So I'm sure that we just product or check out. Total prisoners lodged in March was one hundred and eleven and of those, the C S O was lodged, I had thirty two, so I need to report thirty six. So I'm sure that we just product or check out. So in that range, plus or minus five. So for good news stories, March is, it was quite a busy month for us and April is continuing to be the same. We're building right now call volumes that are usually seen in the summer months. So warmer temperature is increasing our call volume and it's, it's quite busy right now for our officers here in Thompson. Throughout February and March, we did receive several reports of a rogue rage incident involving a particular male. It's several of those accounts were on social media. You may have seen them. We were able to track that male down and we did arrest him. He was subsequently charged with several counts of assault, of threats and mischief. As well as other highway traffic offenses. I don't think, to my knowledge, we haven't received any calls since that happened. So hopefully address that issue that we were having with that particular person. On March seventh, we were informed that a vehicle had been stolen from a residence. That vehicle soon became stuck in a snowbank and passerby helped stop to help that truck under the snowbank. And after it was, was removed from the snowbank, it actually signed to a vehicle that was, that helped assist it. Our officers came across the vehicle and did not stop or refuse to stop for us and initiated or tried to initiate pursuit. Officers did not pursue right in the neighborhood and they were pulled off. However, continued control of the area, located the vehicle stopped again. And in that vehicle, we located eleven year old and a twelve year old female. Eleven year old enough in charge, or a twelve year old was arrested and will be charged with assault and driving if we did it. Our March twentieth youths, again, we're keeping us busy. We had several calls of multiple youths trying to steal items from businesses in the mall area. When these youths were confronted, the employees were confronted with knives and as well as threats from a fair spray in possession by the youth. Our officers ended up a short pursuit. We were able to arrest five male youths, all aged between thirteen and sixteen years old, which had knives at them as well as brass knives. And then finally, our officer was on patrol, was actually our traffic officer, our municipal traffic officer was on patrol in Thompson on March twenty sixth. He conducted a vehicle stop and while speaking with the driver, he observed a large quantity of liquor in the backseat, more than one would have for consumption. Driver warned the officer that he was traveling to cross lake and taking liquor back for a wedding. The officer made aware that possession of alcohol or liquor in cross lake is prohibited. So he conducted an arrest and the liquor gaming, that is controlled act, seized the liquor and issued multiple offensive related acts. Our police community relations unit was busy in March. Again, despite being busy, they're still getting out in the community and doing some good work. So the fraud people and Zanny Bieber or Diapers. Multiple presentations were made to the Berwick School, both for cyber bullying and sexting presentations. Social norms and self presentation and extortion presentations. They also attended multiple times the breakfast programs, both at the Wathamack and Junior for schools. Justin Cleveland is working with R D C J right now for the bus stop that's across from the high school. It's a popular area of this, the youth to collect and they're vaping and smoking and drinking in that bus stop. So us would be one of the work with this one, leave the city to address that bus stop and hopefully deter the youth from hanging out in there. As you know, we had our red search ceremony of officers to recognize special officials that have worked within that area. And there's many of them. Our public, our police community relations unit also completed grant funding application to an M K O. We're leading the public safety, cannabis call proposition to the indigenous community corrections initiative, which is intended to address over representation of indigenous and cannabis justice system. And then also attended someone's home here in Thompson, the father told us and asked us to give him a hand with the daughter and provide her some education on safe, safe self home practices. So Russell Cleveland moved up the presentation and went to the school and provided a reservation to the father and the daughter to educate them on, 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 on safe self home practices. So. If any, any questions, that's all I have for you. We are currently working on any of these priorities. They're almost done though, and we'll be alert on them for the next weeks.
Thank you very much. Good job, Mr. Park. Questions? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had two questions. So one, you mentioned that there is a fifty percent reduction in the sexual assaults compared to last year. It seems like a huge reduction. Do you suspect that there is actually a reduction in those things happening in our community or do you do just less people reporting potentially?
Good question.
My second question is for youth involved in crime, are you aware of any, like so I think my mind goes to be eleven year old and a twelve year old in that incident, if there is any type of like preventative justice type programming or anything that exists that those people can be connected to in our community?
Mostly with Street Reach. So we'll be a troubled youth. We do partner with Street Reach and they make contact with youth and their parents. We're also in the process of working with Hope War and their mobile crisis units. So we're, we're currently developing standard operating procedures to engage Hope War for youth in crisis. So rather than us engaging youth when we have all the youth in crisis or mental health issue or concern. We're working with Hope War to deploy their mobile crisis unit to the, with us to the call and hopefully take the lead on anything. So there are steps we're keeping to, to address and connect with.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Well, thank you, Inspector, for your important update. I do notice a couple of things that is that a part of the strategy that you have been sending people around to the C S O, maybe the patrol and patrolling this occasionally, but not regularly? Is that part of the strategy? Whether I noticed there's a few times in time. First, the people that are around, does he make a change, like impact to that area? Like do you get more call, less call?
Yeah, so there's actually a lot of studies and all, a lot of the studies over, you know, decades, going to officer presence, deter criminal activity. So not necessarily increasing the number of police officers in a certain area, but increasing the visibility of police officers that we have in a certain area to deter criminal activity in a crime area. So I need each other officers are visible in areas in which there may be high crime, as an example, the area that you're talking about. It's our hope that will deter criminal. So, so yes, we are trying to place our officers in high crime areas to be visible and deter criminal.
Just part of the strategy is. So I apologize last, last time the meeting that I missed because of the a lot of priority I cannot get out of, I don't probably need to come and talk with you. Actually, the same question I'd like to ask you too, like you, you, you guys are the expert with a gun in the area. So I'd like to have a little bit more high level of discussion about what can we do? You know, besides adding more police officers or anything, but the problem still here. We still hear that daily, especially recently I heard there was beat up at the Hayes world. So one of the four already done. In that shape in an I C, I think, I'm not sure, but this one I heard on the screen. So those kind of things rise a lot. So I like to have more serious and more deep into the discussion, what can you guys do to help? I know it's not the day, one day thing. It's just like, what kind of system, strategy that we can implement to see whether can we change some behavior? So that, that is another discussion I'd like to have and mentioning.
We actually did have those exact discussions a few weeks ago. Commissioner Chong, myself, city manager were acting. Those were some of the exact things that we just discussed how, you know, some of the strategies and that. That's why it's very important that we, we come in that we, we are heard during these or send in our requests and that. So I, I definitely do think that the R C M P are just
Yeah, I know that we, we can suggest what we want, but against you, you guys are the one who know. You guys are the food, know more than I, we do, representing what we see outside. So you guys will know more about those kind of things, how to deal with it, what kind of way that you guys can do or use to help out the situation. This is what I'd like to know from, from your perspective. I can tell you what I want, but doesn't mean that it's workable. Because it's totally different work, right? So those are the things that I'm more interested in to discuss and hopefully another opportunity come again and I will be sure that I go.
So here, counselor, I'm always available. I, I find those meetings very productive. I think we're in an interesting time of policing right now where we need out of the box thinking and new ideas to come that have what we're looking at and what we're dealing with, specifically being homelessness, addictions, mental health. And, and the whole ideology of those, those processes moving from being a policing issue or a crime, a criminal nature to being a social issue and how we work together with our partners to address those problems, the root problems of the conflict. So. So I welcome those discussions. So I'm available anytime you want to call me. I'm, 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 I'm available already.
Thank you. Call, turn on, Mark?
Inspector Burrell, I know that you and your, the R C F P O, other members, you're wise with a lot of stats and different information. Over the last, well, since I've been on council to help us in our lobbying efforts that will help us with our public safety plan and and anything that we're doing going forward. And one of the things that we discussed recently was this catch and release. Catch somebody doing something, next day they're back doing it again. I'm just wondering are we tracking any of that? Like when we're looking at these stats that are increasing, and we talked to us before, one person had committed eighteen of the thirty, whatever crime it was. And so that's not one way out because one person's getting caught doing it, then released, doing it again, doing it over and over again. And I know that that's, some of that has to do with something that the federal government did. To affect the way we police or we can install the bail system. Wondering if we have any stats on that, that we can use in our lobbying efforts or we're already doing.
We do track. I, I can provide some to you, sure. I mean, you know, we, we track, we track, we do track because we, we focus our efforts on the criminal that when, in which our energy would be most beneficial. So, you know, we obviously want to track the criminals that are creating more work for us. Focus our efforts on those than crime is probably go down. So we do, we do track those and obviously I can't find any of that, but I can give you some specifics about how many times you're dealing with vendors or over people vendors within Thompson area. Or that, I can, I can definitely grab those easily. You retract all the time stuff and something we need to do. So.
Excellent. I'm sure, certainly will help us with the C M. Thank you.
In our regular meeting with Inspector World today, we actually discussed some of the, you know, the things and the issues and that. So that'll be, you know, coming forward with some of the ideas that we shared today, both moving forward and very exciting. The quiet side of the room tonight, is there any comments?
And Senator Congressman Piper, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's a report that you gave that, that I requested the language reserved is bringing in the most problems to Thompson. And then and the number of grand taken for
Yep. So I, I did report that. I just don't put it in the public or word, but the C A O has access to that.
Yeah. So I summarized our report. I think I shared a page out to council. If not, I can recirculate it, but we also took those statistics to Winnipeg. Where it basically said, people who are being arrested. Those are the numbers we're sharing with National Justice and with Public Safety Canada.
Seeing no more comments. Thank you very much for your report and you definitely appreciate the updates that they come in. All the hard work that everybody does, that's enough. Okay, we're going to move on to six point two, public safety report. They were telling you.
And so public safety, so the taxi, there was a taxi horse that was scheduled to take place in March, but it was canceled due to the storm. It was rescheduled for April the tenth and it was full class of eighty people and all, or sorry, twelve and all twelve didn't impact. The vehicle for hire by law was reviewed by the members of the taxi commission and it is there were four instances where we had some camera images removed, I think a couple at request of the R C M P and a couple for internal reasons. And there's currently no, all taxis are on the roll currently, there's no, none of the, the business licenses, letters presented that the U N E N E P F this year possibly in December to all the people who registered or had their businesses registered in twenty twenty two. It was two sixty eight at that time and currently we have one hundred and seventy eight that are licensed. The animal control officer have done a total of since by convention, presentation that in their local schools or schools, teachers, different things. And he will continue to do on his case, keep the circuitry of us being we're currently actually working on organizing any on paid tickets that we had in the animal control section of the there's quite a few, so it's going to take us some time to go through them. Hopefully they'll be sent, they'll start the process of sending out notices to them. And we've also created a Facebook page for all by law related matters, whether it be animal control, business license names, C S O's. It's up and running now. So it's on Facebook. So if you can share it, we're trying to put most of our stuff on that Facebook page instead of taking over the city of Thompson sites, so things don't get lost. So it's been on there now for a few days. So it's, I think so far it's pretty successful. We just have to get the word out and share it a little bit more. Carol's been making a lot of nice, different cool posters. So hopefully it draws the attention of people. The stats from the animal control, our numbers are up slightly. We know that it's going to get up a little bit more as the warmer weather kind of comes up, there's going to be more complaints, there's going to be more animals out of the boat. People usually open the doors, lock their pets. So whether weather that and stuff. So our numbers have gone up a little bit for March. So I think like citizen complaints have gone up from twenty two to thirty nine in March. And I think our wanting at large have gone up as well. We got seven in February, we're at two thousand. To date, we have a hundred and ninety dogs registered and seventeen cats registered. For the bylaw infractions, there's a few sub tickets for parking on the street on garbage day. They're usually always consistent around anywhere from the thirteenth to the ninth and thirteenth month. They usually don't fluctuate too much. Handicap, we know this more in the summertime, while they get a lot more in casting, it's stolen by, by slow branch. So it's not just the bylaw officer that the police ticket. The licensed inspector as well, when he's out, he's patrolling, he actually can do those tickets as well, as well as the C S O. So you really have probably on a given day during the week, we have three people really out of control and unable to issue tickets for any crack on that issue.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? And none from anyone else. Seventeen cats? I think that, that many have been dropped off, but my cat fell a little bit. I think we're a little bit down in our cat licenses. A hundred and ninety dogs, where does that put us from other years?
I'd have to check and see. I think for, it averages, I mean, anywhere, I think one year we were at seven hundred and the next year we're at four fifty, five hundred. So it's depending on if people are coming back and getting a license year and years.
I was thinking we should be more to that four to five hundred number. So maybe we'll do a, let's hear.
Actually, there's already one, Carolyn, I'm talking about Rick from meeting. Actually, there's already one, Carolyn, talking about Rick from meeting, she thought we've already got some ones that are going to be going out, so we're going to be doing the beginning of the next month. You know, there's lots of dogs out there and have some.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much for the report. Thanks for coming to Thompson Fire and Emergency Services. We have the ambulance reports and the fire and ambulance inspection.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Again, the month of March was busy for Thompson Fire and Services on D E M S side. We have a total of seven hundred and ten trips in the month of March, which one hundred and twenty seven of those that you see the breakdown on that ambulance response for. Four hundred and twenty seven of those were within city limits and they had two hundred and eighty three total with respect to city limits. What that means when it comes to units on availability for Thompson citizens, it averaged to just over seven, almost seventy four hours. Where there was no animals available for to respond to the city or any which probably three days, seventy three point eight hours for units on availability. For us here at Thompson. Um. I I feel remiss, I was I was down for the most of March, I was getting home a new plan for for for. Some personal management, dealing with their families, so Deputy Sweeney is in the audience here today, just basically to. At dawn and learn a new trip to trade, if you will, and my my hats off to. To everyone that didn't respond to the to the shoppers fire. I know that the Madam Mayor was at a pound. The city manager was at a town and I was at a town. So basically the B team, if you roll the official B team, thank you Deputy Mayor Valentino, Lyle. And Deputy Sweeney for picking on picking on the the task of the donkey task of. Trying to keep our community safe, everyone that that took part in this, so again, thank you very much for me. Uh, so over to the fire responsive for the month of March, we had a total of thirty seven. And in in that dollar loss value, I was kind of hoping to have an update from the investigator on the on the shop was fired, I reached out to him. And he's made some last minute requests through to our office and to the really inspectors officer. Hopefully, as soon as I get an update from from the investigator, we'll report back to you. So the the dollar loss amount is roughly five million dollars with respect to the R H A's COVID clinic. The old. Video, Roger's video, and of course, Ed Chappers as well. So that's that's just a overall estimate, and it's not an exact dollar value, that's just a just an estimate. So year date, we had a hundred and thirteen as of last year, we had a hundred and forty eight, so we're down twenty three point six five percent. And the reason being down twenty three point six five percent is with respect to the South Tower. Last year, this time, we had large calls loaded the South Tower or. Or full stations malicious, malicious calls in nature, whatever it is, maybe those numbers have dropped significantly since the new ownership and. The administration for the. Where the towers have basically tried to mitigate the problem issues that were basically both on the fireside and the MSI hand police. Um, so we had a twenty three point six five percent reduction in calls this time last year. On the ambulance side, however. We did see an increase of three point six percent decrease over calls of. Calls of last year nineteen sixty two. To two thousand and twenty two this year. Inspections ongoing for the month of March, we had four, eight was nine, year date twenty twenty two was ten. Knowfights issued in March and on the fire pit inspections by, sorry, pardon me, there five re inspections. And totaling all of these and now it makes sense of no more inspections.
Thank you. We comment shortly?
That's over. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding the your stats for out of town service calls, you mentioned that. It was a valentino possibly three days of not having ambulance available locally. What is the range in terms of like out of town service, like how far would that take our staff if we're doing that at all?
Sorry, the units in availability is when we have two ambulance from side of case to encounter third ambulance that we have downstairs is staffed with overtime. The two units that are staffed twenty four seven and basically they're running side of case, so. Our cashman area is as far as with respect to our service versus agreement, we actually had a call today back to the community of the road. Simply because there are units down the mechanical, we've done intercepts on the highway from neighboring our EMS services with Lee Rapids. And of course to Nelson House. If we have the resources available, basically.
Yeah, one more question. You were talking about calls being down with the. One of the towers, the change of ownership, is both the south and northern tower open now or is one still vacant?
The north tower is still closed. Yeah, under renovations with with new ownership and we set it down.
But the calls are still down from the other building.
Yes.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Valentino?
Thanks, Mr. Look, thanks for your report. B team has steep learning curve. In terms of the similar to council over there for responsible. Times where the ambulance isn't available, is there a way you could capture that for the first quarter? For us? Again, I think that would be valuable for. Discussion that we're having, especially with that or agreement that's. And it's by again, the end of June, so we'll pick out quarterly when that agreed.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, yeah, it's great news on the towers because, you know, that definitely was last year. A real V and R bonnet, not so it's nice to see that the new management has stepped up to the plate and that was securely enough, so. And I'm looking forward to the north tower opening under the same circumstances. I know they're doing a lot of work on there. I've been in contact with you and permits and that, so great news. Fire pits, just by looking on Facebook, there's definitely more fire pits than you have, so. I think that'll be another little bits that we put out is for people to get their fire pits inspected and re inspected, so. We'll definitely continue in there. We'll see, nothing further. Thank you definitely you and your crews for all that you do. Next, we're going to recreation and community services. We have a memo from program manager in regards to the vehicle for hire by law.
Well.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if you're as excited as I am to see this again, but we are thrilled to get this here. And so we did send after the first reading, we sent the bylaw off, we found a lawyer who is well versed in the vehicle for hire and. Bylaws, so he was a great help to us and he cleaned it up a little bit for us, the bylaw. He's taken out duplicate stuff so that you don't miss anything in the future and he's reported a few things so that it's clear legally. So we're pretty excited about this. We haven't. The the intent of the bylaw has been the same, so the intent is the same. We haven't really added a whole lot or anything really other than. A couple of items, so we did after meeting with the vehicle or the taxi commission a few weeks ago. We discussed the audio and we feel that it would be very beneficial for the cabs to have the audio. We've had several incidents where we download the. Audio or the video and it would just help if we have audio with it to get rid of that he said, she said stuff. So we have to begin there. For discussion, I guess, if you if you want it removed, we certainly can, but as. As Ray and I really think that this would be very beneficial, any conversations with the R C and P, they feel it would be beneficial as well to have the audio. Other things that we've cleaned things up, so under section four point two. A and B, those both deal with the operation red nose as well as the hotels and shuttles, so that'll take care of those. They are not. The bylaw doesn't apply to them as long as they meet the criteria of those. Items. The dispatcher's license again, so we've added the dispatcher's license, they will be required to have a complaints policy of. Retrieval, property retrieval policy, insurance and data security measures. And all of the dispatchers are aware that this is coming, so it's not going to be a real big surprise to them. So. I don't know if you want me to go through all of this, but I'll do some highlights here. So section twenty one is no false signage, so you cannot advertise anything other than a taxi if you're a taxi. You have to be a taxi, so you can't be a shuttle and advertise for taxi. Only taxis can be dispatched, you cannot dispatch anything other than a taxi, so no. Ubers or anything like that, there's nothing in the bylaw that allows for those, so you have to be a licensed taxi to be on the road. A dispatch must dispatch vehicles in. So they can't. Whoever comes first unless of course it is a inaccessible, somebody's requesting an accessible taxi. If it's an accessible taxi, they get and they say that they are an accessible taxi, they get bumped to buy. Not for someone with lots of growth track when they need an accessible taxi, if it's somebody who really needs an accessible taxi. They must report refusal to service or refusal to drop off a passenger at their preferred destination. And that's because we all see it on Facebook, we want Ray to know what's going on. And have an answer for you before it hits Facebook and gets out of control, so they're responsible for reporting to Ray. They cannot refuse to dispatch unless it's approved by Ray, so a taxi cannot say they're not going to dispatch another car. Dispatcher cannot say they're not, they're not going to dispatch a taxi unless it's approved by Ray. And. Only eligible individuals can apply for an operator license, so in conversation with you guys. We put that they have to be resident of Thompson, they have to be full time driver and they have to have at least six months of driving experience as a taxi driver before they could apply to run off for your. We've added two accessible taxis on here, so a lottery will be going up shortly regarding the two accessible taxis, so that would give us a total of three accessible taxis. We've clarified transfer of ownership and that the approval of the, so if one taxi selling their taxi to another, it has to be approved by Ray before. The taxi is sold because we want to make sure that they meet our criteria. After they've sold it to someone who doesn't meet the criteria, it gets very ugly quickly. We've increased the hours for the acceptable taxi, it used to be that they had to be available between six and ten. We've updated till eleven o'clock, so that if somebody's taking an accessible taxi, they can order for a hockey game and they can actually get home. So that in fact. We've clarified that when we we order a taxi open service, that we mean now and. It's to be out of service here to go apartment. When a vehicle, when a taxi is decommissioned. It is to be stripped of anything that identifies it as a taxi, so they have to remove the stroll, this deckles. The camera, the leader, all of that has to be removed and Ray has to. Sign off that it's approved, that it's been removed. We've added a section that we have some taxi drivers that are driving twenty three hours a day. Seven days a week, so we made a maximum shift of fourteen hours for the safety of the citizens. And everybody else on the road and they have to have eight hours in between that they can rest. We've clarified that they are required to secure passengers who are in wheelchairs or mobility aids. We are creating a handicap or an accessible training session for. The cab drivers. And we have provided that if there's any increase for limousines, that there will be a lottery, so currently there's one limousine. If council decides to increase that in the bylaw. And we have changed the appeals process. There was a few items that when they were appealed, had to come to council. We've changed that so that all appeals, but it didn't aligns will go to commit the vehicle for hire committee. The commission rather. Well, those are the highlights of bylaw. Did you have something to add?
I was just to add, just because the accessible taxis have to be on the roll from six to six A M to another A M, that does not mean that they can't. Stay later, that's just something that we put into place to make sure that they actually have to be on the roll during that period.
Okay, number. Pardon?
So I think the administration will be recommending that council bring this forward to the next meeting. A regular meeting of councils so that there could be a first reading, but it's now council's time to discuss. Is any changes or there's things that aren't there that. All right, it's already had a first reading, you're right.
I just wanted to highlight the sixty eight F. Provides exemption for allow passengers in the front seat. After eleven P M, when it's second discussion of the driver, I thought that was an interesting one. But and first of all, big thanks. Had the pleasure of being one of the counselors that helped them there that about to read this.
Sorry.
Thank you, sorry for the pain. And I appreciate all the work you put into this, looks great to me, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I was over there. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sixty eight F was. Kind of the only one, I guess, maybe that I I have a few concerns about, just because I know that was put in place for safety reasons. That being said, it would be enough for me to say that I'm sort of against passing. The changes that have been made to this bylaw. But, yeah, I just, I do have some some concerns regarding, even though it does say it's to the discretion of the driver. I mean, it's easy for. If you have aggressive passengers for them to push to say, you know, you're allowed to have passengers now after eleven, even though. It's to the discretion of the driver, right? So that's kind of my only concern with that.
I'll clarify that for you, so they're still not allowed to have passengers in the front seat the majority of the time. We did have a couple of exemptions. One being that if they were coming back from the airport on a medevac that they would have. If there was more, and the other one was if you had a mom. With three little ones. We tried to put it in there, but you you could say an adult with children. Or minors, but that could be an eighteen year old or seventeen year olds, which didn't quite meet. So that's why we've added the portion of if they feel safe, so it's to protect them in that instance and rather.
That was a little where it's suggested.
Yeah.
He definitely.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'm fine with having this moved forward with the audio.
Anyone else? I'm sorry.
Is there a fee difference between casual? Park time to time? License? I I think it's very complicated when you guys make it such a category. Only allowed to do so many hours. But the pain the same. So for me to entice the industry, someone got to test the water before they can decide whether to go further or not. So now I'm. But you limited my hour. How am I going to advance if I want to? Do I have to change my license up like?
Well, you can, you're open.
Do I have to pay it again?
There is a re licensing fee, but it's not here as much.
It's significant.
In the bylaw, so let's say I I started a casual. So two months later, I think I like the job, I want to become more hour, okay? So is that in the bylaw that I can do that without paying extra or I can do that?
There is.
Or you have to go to another hole?
I think it's thirty one dollars, but I would have.
How about process like you have to reapply and get through all these again?
You just come to.
Just have a.
Contact me, tell me one of the license and I make you do that.
So make sure that part you explain to those guys, there's some they don't understand.
I've had quite a few already this year that.
Because I have explained to them, I'm not the one who picked the license. But I try to, I try to understand as well, right? Because I asked a question.
Yeah.
Good. About the the accessible license. So under the section thirty four, there. So under the section thirty-four that you guys adding to it. So let's say. I, I, okay, let me rephrase this. So. The new bylaw will not allow me to onboard in one taxi now, is it? See the same way. So now, okay, let me give you a scenario. I bought this accessible taxi from someone else. With the first round of lottery, I didn't put my name. Can I still put my name this round? Yes, you see what I'm saying?
So what would happen is. Anybody can change their standard taxi to an accessible taxi. You just can't change it back, so if you have an accessible taxi or a standard taxi that you want to change, that's not an issue, but we will have a lottery for the other two.
You misunderstood my question. So now you have issued two more accessible taxi operation license. So the bylaw will still allow me to bid on it.
No, not for one year. If you're winning of the lottery, you have to maintain.
I bought this taxi from someone else, someone else put the name to God. The accessible, I didn't put my name. So now, now you guys issued two more licenses, can I still put my name for that lottery?
Yes. If you're.
There's no discrimination against that.
You have to be a full-time driver, in good standing with the city.
Of course, the section thirty-four stated very clearly. But the only thing is not clear, like, just like I said. I repopped the license from someone else, I paid top dollar. I didn't put my name in the first round, so this is second round considered. So can I still allow to vote, so you guys say yes. Okay, let's all make sure that. The bylaw is stated such a way, so yeah, there's no, no argument label on it, because. I heard some, you know, from the street, right? So I just want to make sure that, like, always to make sure that all is clear.
Yes, we changed it at the request of. The complaints I was getting and that was a proposal to the Taxi Commission at the last meeting, they okayed it and we changed the bylaw.
And my last question, so the lottery, how you guys would conduct the lottery? It's a very good question, I'd like to know.
Absolutely, no, we've actually had quite a few discussions on it, we're preparing a regulation on it, but what will happen is. Ray will go through the list of full-time drivers who meet the eligibility, they've got the six months, they've been driving a hundred fifty-six hours and they're standing with us. Ray will send them a letter. The letter will state that they're eligible, when they come back, they bring the letter with them. The, and then they'll pay, I think we've got a fifty-dollar application fee for that coming forward. They'll pay it, we'll put their name in the lottery, we have someone totally away from the city of Thompson who's willing to. Draw the license for us, the license numbers, and they will put them in order, so. It'll all be buried this week, we won't know whose number is pulled until. Are who belongs to the number until it's.
So, sorry, the person you said, not from the city, any particular. Group that you guys are thinking about?
We are looking at law enforcement, yes.
Something like that. Appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else?
I got this question here, I don't know whether it's a half or not. The question is. I, do we have a bylaw that. When the transport baby or children in the taxi, do they need to go? I don't know, so.
It's highway traffic.
What happened if that accident?
I can enforce the highway traffic act. Go under that. They have to be careful with laws we try to enforce.
Like regular. We, we transport baby or. Or children, because you put them in the ship somehow, cut it, something like that, but to protect them for safety purpose. So. How do, how do we, like. The insurance or how, how, how do we handle all this?
They have their own insurance, so all taxi drivers are owners who have insurance that we cover in case of.
For this transporting baby and children?
They have specific insurance for, it's called a vehicle for hire. Insurance. And it's specific to transporting people, so they have to have a higher.
I think it's very complicated.
If they're transporting people that are not in the proper childcare seats.
If I catch that on video, I immediately just call my problems and they come to me. They watch the video and if they need it, they take it, but they have. I work in conjunction with them.
So that's in time, if our company have to go with the. Coffee or video.
Cameras weren't in the car.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor?
Just one final question. I understand the casual. Full-time, part-time license reason. Is for eligible for applying. Operation license. Only thing that I can see the value of it. But the rest I don't see of them as a business perspective, because you're controlling the people, how many hours they can work. What is the actual benefit for that? I like to understand that part.
Actually, it's what they ask for. New drivers, sometimes they don't want to work full-time hours. They only want to work once or twice a month or something like that, so. Just so that the hours are specifically so that we know where the cutoff is, right, where they should be fit for. Whether they should have a full-time license or a part-time license or. If they're only driving this a while, then they're a little bit casual, but it's, it's something that they're asking for, they asked for, they want a casual license.
It's very rare to me, when people think that, to me. For us, I see the point for having a full-time to allow you to go for the operation license. But operating, it's just, it's so complicated like that, you're someday I want to work more because of. A shot of money, I need to pay for my vacation. So because I have the casual license, so now. You have to go through a little bit of a hassle to get my, my status change. To work more, I can get caught by working extra than me because of the bylaw, I think that's. It's not a very good way of handling that license, I'm not saying the rest, but. It, I don't see a big value of that part to making it for bylaw, so somehow I think it need to be a little bit of a. Study on that, so that's, that's my sense, thank you.
Anyone else?
No, not two, there is only one. And he hasn't driven in two years.
Thank you, thank you for that, bringing that bylaw forward, it's definitely been a long time coming. And I'd like to clean up the language and the duplication. Next we'll move on to seven point two, that's a memo from the program manager.
Sorry, just for process to confirm that administration we're bringing this back.
We agreed to bring it back for a second reading on Monday by show pass. Yes, we are. Seven point two is a memo from the program manager in regards to municipal bylaw enforcement act. Enabled by law amendment. Who's speaking on that?
That'll be me. So. We brought forward some amendments for the municipal bylaw enforcement, so we're adding quite a few. Thirty, forty new fines, which we feel will help Ray in enforcement with the taxis. So what we've done is. Dispatch and owners, they're at over a thousand dollars a fine, and then the drivers are at about five hundred, but we've added. Several pages of. Of new fines to help Ray there. We've also, there's been some that were missed previously when we transferred over to the compliance, so we've added those and then some that were totally missed. That we don't even have. Yeah, I'm jumping ahead of myself here, but yeah, so these ones were missed or the new fines for Ray.
Okay, you have any comments on this? You would like to move this ahead for this week also?
Yes.
Show hands, since what moves ahead? There's a memo from the program manager in regards to amending twenty twenty-one fee fines.
That'll be me again, so we've got your amended fee and fine in front of you. Again, we've had to add all the fines in there for the taxis, the vehicle for hire, those have all been added in there. Kind of cleaned it up a little bit in some of the other areas, but there were some that were missing. We had fines in the enabling act for them, but no actual fine in the fee and fine for them, so we've added some of those for other areas as well, like. Failure to use appropriate refuse container, there's a fine in the enabling, but not in our fee and fines, so those have been added. I kind of put titles on them so you know which bylaw that they're from, the defined section, so that they're a little bit easier to find. And then we had some, sorry, I'm scrolling through. Sorry. We also added some. The big bylaw. We added a dispatch license and then if we had to suspend it, a reinstatement cost. Standard taxi cab operators license, and we also added an accessible taxi operators license. It's a little bit more costly for an accessible taxi to operate because they're a little bit larger, they take more gas, they take more time. So we provided them a fifty percent discount to kind of give them a little incentive. A little help there. And then we also added the reinstatement license for a taxi cab driver after suspension.
Any comments, councilor?
One thing caught my eyes about the firewood. What is that all about? Stop pile firewood. Fine, what is that?
That would be if you had too much firewood, there's a bylaw that states how much firewood you can have in your yard. And so that would be the fine that goes with this.
So what is the volume then, right now? That allow?
Believe it's four courts.
And it has to be acceptable fee from the primary property and the adjacent property.
I see there will be a lot of trouble for that, anyway, it is what it is. I just want to clarify because I've never seen that before, this was time. Thank you.
Sorry, that one's not new, I just put a title on now and that's been in their report.
I was gonna say it has been.
Four court, right, is that what? Yeah, I'll stand corrected, I believe. For sure. Right now, need to get out. All right.
Any, any questions on, were there questions on these? Are we ready to go?
After, thinking about a mayor, after it. If it passes a second and third reading, does it change to say twenty twenty-two? And like, is this, will that change? Yeah, does it, like, right now it says fee and fine schedule twenty twenty-one, is that? Updated after it gets approved, does it change to say twenty twenty-two or is it?
We can make that change. The other departments haven't brought forward their changes, last year there were proposed changes that have not approved. So it kind of stuck at twenty twenty-one, but yeah, that's.
So we are okay with bringing forward this amended. Seven point four is a memo from the director of recreation and community services in regard to the waiving of fees. Request from the University of Winnipeg for the PRCC Bill Kamaski Wellness Center.
So we received a request from University of Winnipeg, a three-day gathering. May twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth, it's taking place at the University College of North. However, they are also in the. The Bill Kamaski Wellness Center for some of their events. They're requesting a fifty percent reduction to the fees associated with the Bill Kamaski. Their total for the three-day event would come in at three thousand one hundred twelve dollars each seven cents. With a fifty percent reduction, it would be thirteen fifty-six four and four.
Comments?
I agree with waving this considering the. Important. We've already looked at reconciliation. And I think that this is a good step or help in some of that. Or minimal cost area. Reduction in their, in their cost in providing this training or similar. Step for city to do. Thank you.
The waving policy. I can't remember exactly what they say, so the waving is only for local businesses or for anybody else? Because I believe when we set a policy to benefit the people in Thompson. Did we state that all that or no? Must be resident of Thompson, did you say? So anybody will able to benefit from this policy then?
Yeah, there's, there's eight, ten different things that they have to do to.
Anyway, I think somehow we need to revisit that policy, because I think somehow this waving is just hanging out of the hand. If there's no restriction, well, benefits. Know what I mean, that there are taxi drivers here and. To assess to the extent.
Thank you, my lady, what I understand about it is that it does benefit Thompson, it benefits us here. Doesn't matter where it's coming from, but the information that is being brought to Thompson did benefit us. Doesn't matter what it is like with this. It will benefit.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Valdo?
Thanks, yes, exactly the same comment as. Counselor McCarver, this is definitely a benefit to our community, to the people that attend the gathering events. And we already have done this with the museum that was here in December or November, that we did the same thing, so it has nothing to do with being resident. But it helps benefit our community and the residents, so definitely all for this.
Thank you, Mayor, as Counselor Lomack alluded to it, it. It helps in the process of truth and reconciliation and puts us under standing and they are partners with the University College of North, which is also a partner in the city. So, yeah, I'm in agreement with this also.
Anyone else? Basically, I agree it does benefit. Our residents in the city, it definitely is in the spirit of representation. As we've done with the other ones, we already have staff there with the fifty percent reduction fees. We're still just basically a lot of our, our costs back that we maintain. So I do see that. So I guess by show hands, I would be in favor of moving this forward. Moving forward. Seven point five is a memo from the Director of Recreation and Community Services in regards to a request for the Nipple Days to be a community event.
So Nipple Days is an annual event. It's based on my first twenty four in development here at C P. They use pretty much. They are requesting stuff that is data, like community event data. To hold this event, getting that status which you part and there's a license. Part. They will obviously have a release under that. So you have that. They would be responded, be attached to this special event, the five, we know to be responsible for that.
Any comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a question. I think the difference between just some other things on the agenda. Is community event and special event the same or they're, they're two separate? It was status, right?
Yeah, it was a same, was a little bit different. A community event is actually what's required that workers and volunteers. That's what they require for them to get a permit to be able to sell lipers, to get a liver before the event. For the community event or especially events. It's similar to what C and Centration would be. So it's an event where there's still, there's no interest to go make some use to. The cost to one, every play, every event.
Thank you. Anyone else? I show hands who are going to support community events and then forward next. Thank you. Seven points six is a memo from the Director of Recreation and Community Services in regards to request for special event status.
So this again is something that we bring forward every year, special event status to hold candidate. There would be no fees associated with the citizens in senior company event. So special event status does cover as well any, any champion, any trainers who we kind of sell their products who don't have this.
Any question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we need forward for special events status for national community as well, or is that not needed because it's outside? It is needed. I knew, I just didn't get a letter from them. And so the, the special event status is required for all sort of public events that we've talked about.
Yeah, so if, so Canada Day and National Christian Day, same thing. People come in and they want to sell, whether it's a local vendor or somebody who can sell, you know, small classes that they can have. If they don't have this, it's like, if you have the need as one, they need to be fine. So the special event status covers that. So it sounds like a lengthy coverage already. They don't leave a license that's covered.
So it's not necessarily required to host the event, but it correct, so allows for, we can have different tents and various things. Thank you.
Was okay with moving this forward to the next. Seven point seven. There's a memo from the Director of Recreation and Community Service in regards to the request for special event status for the C H K M.
So rest of the other ones, this is a brutal event, like some where there's a fee actually for the exhibitors to actually go into the H and tree shop. So this, this is really again a lengthy coverage for them. They put case, C H K M, but it involved eighty four feet for the for all, something that does. And it gets that length to cover to more of them.
Any questions? Dana, Rachel Penn, who's in favor of moving it forward? And there's, thank you for your. Eight point one is a memo from the Chief Financial Officer in regards to taxes added and tax. Thank you. We recently received the information from the Judicial Assessment Branch regarding some cancellations and additions that are required to tax roll. This information is received periodically from them and they have posted changes to the value of properties. Every year when these are brought forward or recorded, it's generated to advise you that these changes in comparison with the budget that's been approved. I can't give you that comparison, see. The changes in the case of business taxes are currently due to business opening and closing. And changes to properties are in cases of decreases in the asset value is a removal of structures such as the garage or, or shed or deck. And the, the additions are because of improvements to the property. While the information that's before you tonight also has a property that was previously owned by the public and totally is now by a private permission. So that property is bound from a rent to a new scenario to an actual real property status. So the impact for us on the cancellation, etc., is thirteen hundred seventy seven dollars and seven hundred and seventy five, that is due to the the two properties that we mentioned and got a gain of three hundred and thirty five dollars and sixty percent. Thank you. Any comments? This is a standard procedure that we go through every year to bring our thought to date. Also one.
I look at one of the summary about the business tax cancellation and addition. It's the same location, same, there's the same amount of assessment. Why the previous one canceled one hundred and twenty four dollars and the new one's only a hundred and forty one? Is some sort of typo or?
No, it's, it's the date of the the
Portion.
Yeah, when the, the actual business posted was in, in July and the other business like the new owner said not until now.
That, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Any other concerns? Are you showing hands? Who's ready to move that forward? Here, thank you. Eight point two is a memo from the Chief Financial Officer in regards to the credit arrangements. Hi, yes, this is the a traditional memo that we do every year to enable us to have a cash overlay on, on our bank accounts. It is every required and we will give a resolution to the purpose. Again, it is a host, any questions on? See now. Who's in favor of moving it forward? Here, thank you. Eight point three is a memo from the Chief Financial Officer in regards to the tax sale. Thank you. We recently told their annual tax sale in April. Mr. Baypole acted as the auctioneer. We had several person, nine persons in the audience who properties that remained in tax sale. Mr. Hall called the order, I made him to order at nine fifty a.m. and he outlined the process for the way that the sale would be conducted to all those persons. There was some confusion from the members of the audience in, in, in the fact that none of them had come prepared with the process that were required and should they did, then they'd be settled on a property. So we adjourned the meeting and allowed them to go to their various banks to obtain the ten thousand or constant that was required to be, should they be successful. They all returned within the time that is allotted. At the end, at the end of the sale, there was one property that was actually sold in and no, no bids were received on the remaining five properties. So they will now refer to the city and they're still assessing whether the, the properties are actually vacant or all we have to. Thank you for that. Eight point four is a member, memo from the Chief Financial Officer in regards to the Association of Manageable Municipalities canoe rebate. New rebate is a rebate that we receive from the Association of Manageable Municipalities for the rebates that they receive through their purchasing agents. And this year, I'm pleased to announce that we received twelve thousand nine hundred eighty three dollars, thirty one cents. The purchases that we made over the last year.
Just a note for council that we didn't really start using the A M M Trading Company in two until the previous council we changed the procurement policy. So as we start using them more, I would anticipate that we'll be getting larger rebates moving into the future. But this is a positive rebate for why we're using the two program.
I think just for the people in the business community, they can be part of the new program. So that for the local businesses, right, Anthony?
That's correct.
So that can be shop local, it's not necessarily for kids. Thank you, Nick. Next, we're going to go to legislative. It's an email I received from the R C M P D Division in regards to the National Police Federation. Prior year retroactive pay costs for City of Thompson.
Yeah, this is for information to council. As council is already aware, the R C M P made settlements with Public Safety Canada on their unionization costs. And those costs have now come due. They've sent us our retro pay invoice for the years that are covered with unionization negotiations. The City of Thompson's bill is one million, one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and three dollars. By far the largest municipal bill for the R C F P services in the province that we're aware. I believe our next closest would probably be Portage or Hurry, about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This is one that A M M as well as F C M have said that they don't want municipalities to pay immediately. But the municipality had to respond to Public Safety Canada with what the payment schedule would be. Would it be this first year? Or would it be over two years? As council didn't have time to meet before that deadline, I indicated to Ottawa that this council would like the two years to pay. Just to give you the option, once council reviews and makes a decision through budgeting process, you can determine that we will pay it in one year or we will pay it over the two year payment schedule. We verified with Public Safety Canada that there will be no interest charges. We're spreading the payment out over two years. It'll just be the amount that's on the invoice split into with one payment in one year, one payment in the next year. So information for council and something that we're going to have to discuss in budget on how you want to proceed with your payments on this.
Thank you. And it is something that we have put money away for in the past. Nine point two. Is a letter from senior assistant.
Members of council.
Oh, sorry.
I don't expect you to have an answer to this right now. And we know how much we put away. I know we were scrolling money away since they told us this could be a two percent increase. And it was not.
I apologize. I don't have that exact amount, but we did receive correspondence from federal government today, saying that they would, for the City of Thompson, we have to make a personal payment if we own the two years. The option is by the end of March twenty twenty four and the second date isn't, wouldn't be due until the end of March twenty twenty five. So we do have an interview.
We, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And with those terms that were relayed today, that still allows A M M and F C M to continue their lobby effort. So for now, there is a bill only. But that does give time to continue the lobbying with federal government.
Anyone else? Sorry, Mr. Punter. Nine point two is a letter again from Senior Assistant Deputy Minister of Public Safety Canada in regards to the Government of Canada's decision on the matter for the payment.
And I apologize, this letter was supposed to be moved under nine point one because it's essentially what we just discussed. Asking if we wanted to pay in one year or in two years. So this has already been addressed by the administration. There's just a letter there for your reference. And I responded using the form at the back.
And I do believe nine point three is also
Nine point three is the information for council so that you see F C M's political position as well as the A M M's political position. You can see that the A M M has joined with the Western Provinces and a few provinces out east and released a joint statement. Those are all the provincial agencies that have heavily R C M P policing communities. And then the F C M as our federal lobby has a separate lobby effort. And if you notice on their social media and their websites, they've been very active on this file. Because when the budget came down federally, there was an expectation this was going to be addressed. That's what the organizations were led to believe. And then there was nothing in the budget for it. So I believe it will continue to be a lobbyist.
So I think that basically addressed nine point four, a letter from the Assistant Deputy Minister and Civil Protection and Government Services in regards to the funding.
No, this one is, that one is with respect to the pool. You want me to address nine point four now or? Nine point four was a letter from the province of Manitoba indicating that the they were advancing our funds for the pool. So I believe they've sent us forward a deposit of four point nine 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 mil, and a half million. Sorry, I said that wrong. Four million, nine hundred and nine thousand dollars and five, five hundred dollars. It's in our account, is what I want to say. We got some money in our account. That's why I'm not the number guy. That deposit's been made and I believe our CFO is going to be moving that from our general account into the aquatic trust fund. So just for council's information.
Thank you. Good news. Nine point. Yes.
Like this kind of a moving fund, do we need a resolution to approve to move into the trust fund or just this in-house transaction? Procedure wise.
They see until the money was earmarked for the aquatic fund. When can you answer? Because then we have to have a resolution to transfer. We're just going to the. There, there are several transfers that we have to do that are carryover from one period. So I will bring forward as we should apply for consideration to be both those transfers.
So the answer, yes, we need a resolution to do that.
So the CFO said she will be bringing forward.
Nine point five. It's a letter from Minister Municipal Relations in regards to the twenty twenty three municipal operating.
So similarly, this one is from Minister Smith with respect to the city's operating basket funds that we discussed previously, letting us know that there will be a deposit of the two million two hundred sixty seven thousand, five hundred ninety seven dollars and ninety one cents with the first payment received by the city of four hundred ninety one thousand, one hundred ninety six dollars and twenty five cents. With the first payment received by the city of four hundred and ninety one thousand, one hundred and ninety six dollars and twenty five cents in March of twenty twenty three. And I believe those funds have also been received in our council deposit.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Nine point six is a letter from Minister Municipal Relations in regards to twenty twenty two transit operating support.
Again, this is another one, uh, with respect to funding being received, this is for the additional transit funding that the province announced. Though we do have a very small allotment, as most of the money went to the City of Winnipeg, um, we are still receiving a one-time grant of eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety three dollars, except the. Towards our transit system, so council will have the opportunity to allocate that as they see fit through the, uh, budget costs.
You, any questions? Here nine point seven. Is a review of the funding agreement for the E V charging project.
And this one I'll, I'll take in while, if you have to jump in. So, um, in the past, one of the priorities of the previous council was to have the administration work on electric vehicle charging. Um, for the City of Thompson, so multiple grants were submitted to Natural Resources Canada. And, um, in partnership with a group called Eco West, Eco West is an economic development arm of the Frankophone version of A M M. Um, they work with a number of municipalities across the province on infrastructure projects. This is one that has gotten together a number of municipalities, submitted a grant to N R C A on our behalf. Um, and it was successful, um, that application was approved by resolution twenty twenty dash one oh one. Um. As well as another, uh, confirmation that was done by the Economic Development Officer, again, in twenty twenty. Sorry, in twenty twenty one, sorry, for already, um. This is part of council's previous strategic plan, as well as the City of Thompson also championing an A M M resolution with respect to charging, uh, for people. Uh, charging stations along the highway networks and places outside of the south of, uh, Manitoba, um. Because of our resolution, the province of Manitoba has now contributed twenty thousand dollars towards this project. Through a new initiative of theirs, uh, called the, um. Expanding vehicle charging infrastructure in the Prairies Initiative. The grant from N R C A is up to fifty thousand dollars on a fifty fifty cost sharing agreement. So if the City of Thompson is able to raise fifty thousand, N R C A's contribution will be another fifty, we should cover a hundred thousand dollars towards the electric vehicle charging program. Um, the previous council had allocated twenty thousand dollars to this project. So that plus the City of Thompson's twenty thousand, or sorry, the province's twenty thousand brings us to forty. And we've had a private donor offer to contribute six thousand is confirmed, and possibly up to ten thousand, so very close to about fifty thousand. Being reached on behalf of the city, uh, to match the federal funds. Um. So the, the administration recommends that, uh, council allow us to sign the agreement with Eco West to proceed with this project. Um, with the funding coming from the zero emission vehicle infrastructure program, the Manitoba's expanding vehicle charging infrastructure in the Prairies Initiative.
And it's really for discussion.
Deputy Mayor Valdez. Uh, thanks very much. Yeah, I'm going to support moving this forward. This was a project that's been a long time coming and it took forever to get that N R C A funding. Um, so I'm supporting us moving this forward and, uh, signing the funding for this funding agreement. Thanks.
Thank you. Also longer.
I'm supporting this series, uh, this is good news. Uh, I don't see a whole lot of electrical vehicles here yet, but you know what's going to, then. We know from our big, huge. Car manufacturers, a lot of stuff going electric, uh. We're way behind on this, here in the cities. Uh. This will allow us, and I won't for going. Leave our key alone for now. Uh. It would also be good for any type of, um, weather testing, we might be considering. Uh. It just places in a similar spot where we're a little ahead of the game where, where it happens to be so that. We're not ahead of the game, we're behind the game, but we got to catch up, then. From the amount of money that we're going to put into this, the amount of lobbying, uh, the work that we did to try and get the other funding. And I think this will be great, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Uh, yeah, I see this as a very positive thing we're gonna. Uh, me too, I can see the benefits, it's one more benefit that we could offer to the weather cats and people that come up here when there's a need to weather testing. Uh, from the tourism aspect, quite often in the fall, when I get up by. Hundred or so tourists, many of them actually have electrical vehicles that, as their tow vehicles and do bring it up here and there is no use, there's what there's. Definitely would help them, and there's definitely a few citizens of Thompson that have expressed interest to us that they'd be interested in. Pursuing a purchase of a vehicle and that, if we have that up here as well, I think it's a win-win situation to get our foot in the door, so. I show hands, who's in support of the administration following. Thank you. Next is nine point eight. Is a letter from the Minister of Environment and Climate Change in regard, regards to the recycling rebate.
So this is information for council, there's a letter here from Minister Klein with respect to the, uh, recycling rebate. And a check of seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty six cents is being provided towards the recycling program.
A comment on this?
Nine point nine.
So, council.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just curious if this is a regular rebate that the recycle center gets, or this is.
Yes, I believe that this is an annual thing that comes through. Um. There's an acronym there, I can, it's the Waste Reduction Recycling Support Program. Roars or raps or something like that, it's, it's an annual support that comes back from the province to support these programs.
Okay. And nine point nine, a letter from Kim Brown Livingston Provincial Weed Specialist in regards to reporting of municipal weed inspectors.
So this is a generic letter that is sent to all municipalities about appointing a noxious weed inspector. Um, the previous council, a number of councils that asked, why are we doing this every year? Um, because if you look at the act, it's actually written for more agricultural areas. I contracted the province at that time and was told, they kind of laughed and said, yeah, it's a very old, uh, act. Um, when it was written, it doesn't really apply to your area, don't really worry about it. And then, so we said, okay, we're going to stop appointing these weed inspectors because it's not needed. And then we receive a letter telling us to appoint one, so we'll have to bring forward a resolution to appoint one. Though currently you don't have anyone trained to do it, and even when we train them. They won't have any work to do on it, but anyhow, um. Once we identify the correct person and if what training is required, we will bring forward a resolution for council to approve the noxious weed inspector.
Thanks, any questions? Council one.
Soon be causing law with the point.
In the past, there hasn't been, I'll have to bring that information.
Anyone else? Dana. Wow. Thank you, council, that was a very long, uh, agenda tonight and, uh, you've completed it in under two hours, so I laid a call for your. Also, over to our, to the run mark, all of them.